Welcome to the February Board Meeting. Mr. Fulbright is not well and not doing well this week, tonight, so I'm, will be presiding. And I guess I'll call Raul as well.
I can call Raul.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
Ms. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Kinzer?
Here.
Mr. Harlan?
Here.
Mr. Fulbright's absent. Mr. Moore? Ms. Irvin? Mr. Sims?
Here.
Mr. Hooper?
Yes.
Mr. Howes present. Mr. Lindsay? And Mr. Duffin is absent.
Thank you. Okay, right now, I'm going to welcome the Spring Hill Elementary students to come forward, and we will stand and have the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. And I, I would ask during the moment of silence that we remember Mount Pleasant and the issues that they've had to face this past week. Thank you. Okay, it's time that we adopt the agenda, and I'm going to ask, Scott has added something to the agenda, and you'll tell us what that is.
It was Chairman, thank you. We received word that our Tennessee All Core Grant, that's the portion from the state, we just received notice that it was approved on Monday. We want to go ahead and start tutoring as soon as possible. We didn't want to wait another month, so we're asking to add that budget amendment, to add those funds. And because we're working with the Boys and Girls Club, we've got a MOU with the Boys and Girls Club, who's going to be doing our logistics, our teachers and educational assistants will be doing the tutoring, but the Boys and Girls Club will be doing the logistics. So you have the budget amendment, and you also have the MOU there. It's 8.5.
Yeah.
And we're just asking to add it to the agenda, because we just got it, we just got it Monday night.
Motion to approve by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Parker. Is any discussion? Then we're ready to vote. It's down at 8.5. Please vote now. No, the motion should be the agenda. Motion as presented, correct. All right. Do we need to vote again on the motion? Please vote now. Mr. Harlan, do you vote yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. It's Harlan votes yes. All right, moving on, the Youth Education Foundation, we're at recognition and announcements, and the first one is, is that you?
Yeah. I'll go ahead and take it. School Board, I'd like to share with you some information presented by the Youth Education Foundation and their many grants. This year, they were very successful with their new website, YEFMurray.com, and was able to award just about $17,000 to 14 different submissions for grants. That is a huge contribution, and I thank the Youth Education Foundation and Robin Grant, who is our go-to person for all they do for the, for Murray County Public Schools. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do y'all have any, okay, thank you so much. Next is recognition of the models of demonstration schools. That's Highland Park Elementary, Randolph Howe, Riverside Elementary, and Mount Pleasant Elementary.
Hello, I'm Mr. Green. I'm the new coordinator of Counseling, Behavioral Supports and Mental Health for Murray County Public Schools. I was a former high school counselor at Mount Pleasant High School. We do want to share some exciting news regarding behavioral supports. These Murray County schools have been selected as Model of Demonstration Schools for Response to Instruction Intervention for Behavior, RTI2B. This recognition is based on the school's partnership with the Tennessee Behavioral Supports Project during the 2021 school year, and congratulations are in order for, that's for the schools to come forward when I mention your name, Model of Demonstration Schools Gold Level, Highland Park Elementary. Model of Demonstration Schools Silver Level, Randolph Howe Elementary. And also, Model of Demonstration Schools Silver Level, Riverside Elementary. Model schools like these are implementing one or more tiers of RTI2B with high fidelity and have applied the framework to improve their school climate, culture, student engagement, and school connections. Also, Mount Pleasant Elementary School was selected as a School of Recognition for Response to Instruction and Intervention for Behaviors, RTI2B. The risk, this recognition is based on the school's partnership with the Tennessee Behavioral Supports Project during the 2020, 2021 school year. Schools are actively engaged in the initial stages of implementing RTI2B. These schools will be featured on the center's website and shared with the Tennessee Department of Education, and they should receive letters, banners, and award images to be shared on their social media websites. So these are our model schools.
Well, congratulations to those schools. We're really proud of you. Lots of hard work. Next is Murray Smiles.
That would be me, and Dr. Ford, don't go too far. Dr. Ford and Ms. Hamilton and their staff was nominated by Amy Costle, and she wrote, "Dr. Ford works hard to make sure the school runs smoothly by giving teachers all the tips and tools they need. Incorporates a little fun, which boosts morale when teachers are working hard. He goes above and beyond to make sure teachers are cared for, from teaching needs to student needs to everyone in the building. He makes sure we are healthy and happy, and that any questions we have are answered. Ms. Hamilton makes sure students' needs are met while supporting teachers and making sure we all have what we need. This dynamic duo runs a friendly and supportive school. This then makes the staff members want to work harder. We feel appreciated, we feel appreciated and know that they try to make sure their students are all well-rounded, are all met, well-rounded." And, or minute, the administration in this building makes us all want to work harder. The school is like a well-oiled machine. Data, student needs, staff needs, parent needs, all work well because of the leadership in this building. When I tell people I love my job, it feels like an understatement. I've always wanted to be a teacher, and this is the place I pray to be a part of. I truly love my job. So first of all, congratulations to Dr. Ford and Ms. Hamilton and staff, and they, do we have our certificates with us? You'll come forward so we can get your pictures. Dr. Ford and Ms. Hamilton, can we get your pictures? Okay. There you go. Well, you need to hold on to that one. And, absolutely. Is that working? Red or green? Red. I would just say, Board, Mr. Higman, everybody, audience, people watching at home, you have teachers that are as dedicated, motivated, energetic, and as happy and fun as Ms. Costle. I've got a building full of them, and it makes it easy to lead. So thank you, Ms. Costle, thank you, the rest of the staff, wherever you're at tonight. Thank y'all.
Thank you. We have one more, we'll get their pictures. And the next submission was submitted by Joe Schmidt, who is the Battle Creek Elementary Principal, and she wanted to recognize and submit the names of Rachel Ronhardt and Kelsey Skerritt, and she said both Kelsey and Rachel have gone above and beyond to support the CDC program at Battle Creek Elementary. I am beyond impressed with their dedication to our students, which I'm certain extends to all exceptional learners throughout Murray County Public Schools. Their approachable demeanor and experience are a tremendous asset to our county. And did either one of those come to you? Yep, come on!
These are some wonderful women that we have in this county, and they are so supportive. And I know that they are tinerant, so they get to spread all of this knowledge and care for our students, and I'm just so grateful that they have taken a little place with Battle Creek, but I know they are doing that in all of our schools. So thank you, ladies.
Okay, thank you, dolls. It left us smiling, so Murray smiles, right? Okay, next is public delegations, and I see that only one had signed up, and that's Sue Stevenson. Ms. Stevenson, if you'll come forward, you'll have five minutes. I think we know you, and I don't know your address, but I know you live in Murray County, so I'm good.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Sue Stevenson, I represent District 6 on the County Commission. I don't typically give out my address, but it's easy enough to find in the phone book, so anyway. I'm here to speak on 8.3.1.2 on your agenda, the naming of the new high school. I listened to your last meeting and listened to that discussion carefully, and I understand that the, the choice was Spring Hill at Battle Creek or Battle Creek for the new high school. And Spring Hill at Battle Creek, I mean, if someone asks you where to go to school, they pretty much want to just be able to say Battle Creek or Spring Hill, rather than Spring Hill at Battle Creek. My phone number's been burning up with calls and complaints, and we've bantered around back and forth on Spring Hill High School for years, and I don't need to tell you that, you and I both know that. It's, it's really a shame that at this critical and controversial time in Spring Hill's history, the school board representative that should be available to speak on behalf of his constituents and families and students is nowhere to be found, and I'm hoping that the legislature will take care of that this session. Battle Creek is the logical choice to promote, I don't know, you know, for logo acronym, SH-ABC, SHBC, you know, please tell me how many other high schools have an at in the middle of their, of their names, but regardless whether they do or not in Middle Tennessee or anywhere in the state, just blank, blank, at blank, blank, just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever, and I think it's really confusing, and it's going to be disruptive. I've already had phone calls from the state and from other entities asking, telling me, so Spring Hill High School is moving and that building is being shut down. And I said, no, no, that's not what's happening, not that I'm able to give you the whole story, because I don't have the whole story yet. But Spring Hill High School needs to remain what it's been, and you need to complete the campus pattern that you began. Battle Creek Elementary, Battle Creek Middle, and Battle Creek High School on Battle Creek Way. You're not going to save any money by naming the new high school Spring Hill at Battle Creek, because you're going to have to create a new logo. It's, it's not just Spring Hill, it's going to be Spring Hill at Battle Creek. So, you know, you have to make a distinction between Spring Hill at Battle Creek and Spring Hill High School. I mean, it, and I guess Raider Lane would just be eliminated, I don't know, but Spring Hill High School, and I've said this repeatedly, is not in any municipality, it is not in any city limits, it is located in Murray County. So to consider naming Spring Hill High School Columbia North Side or North Columbia makes no sense whatsoever. It's inaccurate, and it's a confusing, confusing misnomer. For the next two and a half to three years, Spring Hill High School is the only high school in northern Murray County, and there are a lot of people that want that legacy protected. Also, I want to say, and I'll get into this at a later time, but the hallways at Spring Hill High School are absolutely in compliance, and they were the night that we discussed it when we had our joint meeting. I've discussed it with the fire marshal, and he and I have reviewed the last seven years' reports. I want to share with you some data. It's not complete, the city only updates its data every six months in terms of development. So right now, the latest, if you go on their website, it's from June to December, excuse me, it's up to June, it's up to June 2021. The next report for July through December should be coming out any time now, but they do not have it ready yet. But I can tell you that when I looked at the latest numbers they had, it was 8,460, but that was all over. I wanted to focus on just northern Murray County. And so out of those 8,460, 5,388 are north of Burt Drive for Spring Hill High School. In going through the minutes today of all the meetings for the last six months, I tried to put together the developments that have been approved for the last six months, and I know I'm short, but the ones that I was able to catch was an additional 2,429, for a total of 7,817, nearly 8,000 north of Burt Drive for Spring Hill High School. And that's just within the Columbia City Limits. That doesn't include the city of Spring Hill's development approvals, or city of Spring Hill, city of Spring Hill or Spring Hill in the county, or developments that are approved in Murray County. I'm on the Regional Planning Commission, so I know there's plenty of developments in the county, and those kids have to go to school as well. Ma'am? Anyway. I hope that you'll keep Spring Hill High School, Spring Hill High School, and Battle Creek, Battle Creek. I requested some information today on capacity of the schools, the last four schools that we built while I've been here. You've got to plan ahead and be proactive. Thank you.
Next is staff reporting.
This is an unusual staffing report, but I did want to use this time to thank the quick reactionary force from Lisa Ventura's office and Derek Morgan's office from the tragedy that happened at our Mount Pleasant complex. Within moments afterwards, they were already getting the things they need done, the people sent to the places they need sent, and just worked well into the night to make sure we were supportive of the students and the staff and the community. So I just want to say a huge kudos to Lisa Ventura and her staff, and Derek Morgan and his, to make sure that we had people on ground. We will continue to have people on ground until they deem that it's no longer needed, and so that's what I have for my staff report.
And we too appreciate all that was done to get us through that tragic situation, and there's just no words, really. So thank you for bringing that up as well. The next thing on the agenda is an executive meeting. The regional committee of the board is going to retire from the meeting and we'll be back.
I don't have my gavel, but I have a teacher voice. I'll entertain. Here we go. I'll entertain a motion on the consent item. Mr. Moore made the motion to approve. Is there a second? Somebody seconded. Mr. Sims seconded. Any discussion? Then we're ready to vote.
Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Parker, sorry. Can you clear? Can I get a little bit of clarification, though, on the first team? Because I didn't see, like, what the actual motion was that we're approving, and there's no attachment to it. I know we had a speaker. Yeah, I know he had a speaker, but I'm not clear on what exactly the motion was. I don't know.
Somebody speak to it.
I can speak to it.
Okay.
Can I modify my motion?
Yeah.
Can I modify my motion to remove that item from the consent items, please?
We've already voted.
Did we?
There was no action requested. It was just an FYI. So I don't really...
That's why I was...
Yeah, I don't think...
I don't think that there was a motion involved at all.
Before the board, it's just got left out there. No, they weren't asking for anything. No motion was made. There was no recommendation.
Okay, so we're okay to go on, right? All right. Next on agenda is finance and back pay for members due to the 2020 census.
Good evening, board members. So last work session, we put this to a decision, and we put together a budget amendment to go ahead and move forward to produce this back pay and disperse it. So that's on here for tonight. And also, the amendment that was approved at the work session for Champs Hardware and Services for our cameras and agenda software for in here. So those were just decisions that were made at the last board meeting that didn't have budget amendments, so they're before you to amend the budget tonight.
All right, is there... Do I hear a motion? A motion to approve 8.1.1. Is there a second? Did I hear a second? Okay. Ms. Irvin, any discussion? Then we're ready to vote. Mr. Moore and Ms. Irvin. Please vote now. And that motion does pass. Next is budget amendment eight. Wait a minute. I'm here eight point. The next budget amendment. Is there any emotion or is any discussion? Did you have a question about it, Mr. Moore?
I did. And where was this coming, the funding coming from on this one?
This was coming...
Okay.
So this was going to come from the maintenance line, the $2 million that was allocated with Eric's budget that's already out there. So we are just making that amendment out of that line item.
Okay. Motion to approve that budget amendment as well.
Okay, motion approved and seconded. Mr. Howell, any discussion? And I'm sorry, I didn't turn my mic on. The motion was made by Mr. Moore, and it was seconded by Mr. Howell, and we're ready to vote. Please vote now. Okay, and that motion does pass. Next is instruction.
Ms. Kinzer, I have one more thing.
Okay, excuse me.
I'm sorry. Just to let you know, 8.5 is the all corpse instruction item that was added to the agenda tonight. There is an amendment associated with that on that agenda line item with the purchase there.
Do you want to... Do you want... Board, do you want to go ahead and...
It's just a clarification.
Take action on that? You know where it is on the agenda, so we'll get to that point. That'll be good. Okay, so instruction is next, and so it's... We're back to the calendar. It's you, Mr. Gaines. And I will explain this for those of you who can't hear well. We have to turn this off a lot of times because they don't work well together. You could hear the back thing, and so sometimes I forget to do that. I'm sorry.
Good evening. We discussed all three, the option A and B. We had brought option A and B. We brought back an option C to the work session for your consideration. I think that was the option that you wanted to be approved for, which would change the calendar for the 2223 school year.
We've had a lot of discussion about it. Mr. Lindsey.
Motion to approve option C.
Mr. Moore seconds that motion. Mr. Lindsey made the motion. Is there any discussion? Then we're ready to vote. Please vote now. And that motion does pass. All right, operations is next, zoning and facilities.
Good evening. The first thing we have is the proposed GMP for maintenance that we ask you at the work session if we could add this. I do want to clarify one thing. If you look in the description, the first line in the description of the projects that would be completed is incorrect. It says boardroom flooring at HOP. It's the entire building at HOP. So that room, this room does not significantly cost that much more than everything else, and I apologize. I just saw that. This is the order, or not the order. This is the list of projects that we would be working on. You said we have a great deal of flooring. We're really struggling in some places. The flooring we would be replacing with is a flooring that does not require waxing, and we will not have to have that ongoing maintenance throughout those buildings in those areas over the next few years. Restaurant partitions at Riverside and EA Cox have become a very big issue. And then we've got some renovations in our gyms. Some of that is updating some equipment that is failing in the older gyms, such as the Goals, different types of things. So we're working through that. We also have four gyms that we would be working on sanding their floors, repainting them. Every gym in our middle schools, high schools, and unit schools would be screened and recoded by an actual company that does gym floors and not just the companies that do our cleaning. So we've looked at 1.25 million. That still leaves us roughly $400,000 that we're still working through on various projects through maintenance. And with the staff that we have in maintenance right now, that'll keep us busy through the end of the summer.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Who made the motion? Mr. Lindsey in the second five, Mr. Moore? Any other discussion? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Moore.
Eric, you brought up the waxing the floors. Is that part of our maintenance contract? Or is that something we do over the summers? I can't recall.
We wax them. It's part of the contract through the cleaning companies.
Is that something we would, once replaced, we would renegotiate?
We would. When we did this with Thorn and Woodard and the schools that we've done this already, we received a credit, and it was a price reduction on their part.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no other lights, then we're ready to vote. Please vote now. My vote is yes. I don't know why I'm getting what I'm getting. That motion does pass. Next on the agenda, 8.3.1.2 is the naming of the new high school.
Yes, ma'am. A couple of things that we were asked to bring to you. I've spoken to a couple of you directly today. We did not upload a new file, and I do apologize for that. The events of the last few days have kind of skewed some of what we have. We did follow up, though, on both things that you asked us to follow up on. Mr. Pointer has had extensive talks with TSSAA about the athletic portion of this and where we would fall within the districting and the cycle of that. With this school opening in the fall of 2024, that is a year in which they can realign. Now, what they ask, and Mr. Pointer, you tell me if I'm... Or speak up if I don't say this correctly. If we leave Spring... The current Spring Hill High School site is a high school, and we open the new high school, obviously. They want us to provide numbers for that zone, potential projected numbers, as soon as possible within that year. Because a lot of the scheduling starts, things happen early in the year. The faster we can provide the numbers, they can do a realignment, and there should not really be a skip or a bad detriment to the athletes that we feared might happen. So if we can provide that moving forward, I think with the pace that we're on, where we are talking about five-year plans and planning in January, and then your commitment to updating that at least every six months, I don't see that as a problem. So that part of the conversation is negligible. As far as zones, we did draw zones based on both of those remaining high schools. We can zone 1,600 students initially between the two schools. That split can be anywhere from an 1,100 at one, a 500 at one, a 700, and an 800. We can divide that out. But looking at the northern area of the county and helping to alleviate part of what Central had to pick up from Spring Hill, getting that back to where it would be, we can create zones that would set these high schools at good numbers to open. And we don't feel like that's really an issue either. Obviously, that's something to bring to you for your... Obviously, that's something to bring to you for your approval. The numbers are there to vet out that both of these can. And by the time 2024 comes around, should probably remain, the current site should remain a high school as well. I'll say this and then I'm stepping out of this unless you have a question. In talking to Ms. Irvin today and Mr. Moore, our feedback on the district side has been this in the last two weeks. Folks would like for Spring Hill High School name to continue. The folks that have contacted us have really said it doesn't matter which site. We just want in 10 years for there to be a Spring Hill High School. So the cleanest option that we have for you is for the current site to remain Spring Hill High School and for the new site to be Battle Creek. And that's the cleanest option that we have. But we'll step out of this and answer questions if you need to.
I don't know whose lights were on first, Ms. Irvin. And it doesn't matter to me if I speak first or whomever, but I don't know if I can get this all out in one setting because I have so many thoughts. My ultimate hope is just to preserve the legacy and the heritage of Spring Hill High School because I've heard from stakeholders throughout the county and I know how important that is. We've got petitions circulating, I think we've received, goodness gracious, only knows how many emails today. And the fact to assume otherwise that it's not important to our constituents is, it's just not, it is, it's important. So that's where I operate first, is to try to preserve that heritage. With that said, I don't know how to achieve that end goal. Because if it was as simple as black and white, and maybe it is, maybe I'm overthinking it. You all know I tend to do that. If it was as simple as black and white, it would be easy to say, let's keep Spring Hill High School, Spring Hill High School and make Battle Creek High School, Battle Creek High School. And I've spoken to county commissioners, Ms. Sue Stevenson sent me a message today. We've contacted, she's on the planning committee. She's assured me that the growth is there. That gives me hope, that gives me hope that maybe we can make the right decision. However, the other side of me in trying to do my due diligence is that I've also set up here, and I'll first state with that, I'm a small schools person. I like the idea of small campus schools to the fact that I've even suggested, let's make this new Battle Creek High School instead of a 2,000 seater, let's make it a 1,200 seater and make it for potential future room for expansion. But the feedback I've heard from countless people is it's more cost effective, more efficient to operate big schools. You have less staff, you have less expenditures, so let's make big schools. I'll pause that thought to say that if we do fund two high schools and if we're operating on a half capacity, I'm trying to think of the future fallout because here's my fear. My fear is we'll name this school one thing and then plans could change. I don't know that it will. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I'm getting everything out there. But if we can't, if we can't meet capacity, if we're, you know, we can't even hire, Central's been without algebra teachers. I mean, and then are we going to be able to find, you know, qualified staff to, to fund two different schools at half capacity? I don't know, maybe we can, maybe we can't. And then we went to the county commission and asked when we were doing budgeting and the county commission was very gracious to give us these funds. But also I keep hearing in the back of my mind, a comment that one of the county commissioners said is, let's cut 66 more teachers than the 22 you've already cut. So I think, you know, are, are we, and the thing is, is I'm not blaming any one person, but what I know is that we're about to go through an election season and in that election season, we don't know who's going to be making these decisions. We don't know if someone's going to tell us, you know what, we're not funding two high schools at half capacity. So now we're back to one. I don't know that. So I'm making my thoughts with those things in mind. Another thought, well, I'm hearing a lot from the Spring Hill schools and I've got kids, I've got constituents that have kids that feed into both Battle Creek and Spring Hill, so it's very, very important to me. However, I'm also hearing from other people throughout the county that's saying, no, 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 no. We've got too much traffic coming up and down 31, that's just going to congest it more. Columbia is growing at an equal rate of speed and we need something somewhere else. So I know, I'm just telling, I want it to be publicly documented, all of my thoughts and the fact that it is not black or white, in my opinion. And unless we have a plan, a, an solid plan for that facility, and from the emails I've received today, people think that that high school is preserved and at this point it is not. It may be, I'm not saying that it won't be, but at this point, that decision for what is going to become of that campus has not been decided and there's a lot of variables. And then hypothetically, if the growth does not occur, and I believe it will, I mean, I'm a realtor, I see the growth. I've heard from them, I believe it is. But I would really like to know, I still just don't get why we have to make this decision tonight. I don't know why we have to have a name for that school tonight. But where I stand is with preserving the name Spring Hill High School. And my thoughts, hypothetically, since we don't know the future plan of that campus, is let's name the new building Spring Hill High School, period. And then we've got two and a half years to see what falls out. And then based upon what falls out, then we can make a plan to then, I mean, if we've got the hallway painted burgundy, well, Battle Creek High School can have a burgundy building. I mean, and there, I mean, there's no reason why their mascot can't accompany it. That's my thought. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to name the new high school, Spring Hill High School.
A second. I'm sorry, there were so many lights on, I thought we were going to have some discussion here. The motions they made to name the new high school, Spring Hill High School, and it was seconded. And there are lights on, Mr. Moore, you're next.
Oh goodness, I'll just be pretty brief on this. I, I think we need to go with naming this Battle Creek High School and if it sticks with our five-year plan, at no point have I seen anybody say that this is the way we need to go, so.
Mr. Lindsey.
I'll be quick, I was going to make a motion to the difference of that. But we have a Spring Hill High School. The only reason we ever talked about, the idea was ever brought forward is that there was a time we talked about closing that building, repur, not, let me take that back, don't, it's quoting me on that. We talked about repurposing that building into something else. Our whole idea behind that was to preserve the name of Spring Hill High School to begin with. Now our five-year plan has changed, we have a Spring Hill High School, we need to name it Battle Creek High School.
Mr. Howell.
So, there's a lot of things going through my mind right now. I've been contacted numerous times, not through email, but not just through email, but by phone calls from various people. I've lived here all my life, I've got cousins that have gone to Spring Hill High School and their children have gone to Spring Hill High School. So it's a little personal for me. So there's no guarantee that if we name this new high school Battle Creek, there's no guarantee that the new building will be a high school, number one. Number two, there's no guarantee that it'll be Spring Hill High School, number two, or three, two. So in order to correct a wrong that was done 30 years ago when, when this, this board took the school out of the seat limits and zip code of Spring Hill, this would be probably the only thing that we could do to preserve that legacy 100%. We can refer back to our five-year plan that is two years old. In the initial plan, we did have repurposing that old building. In less than a year, we revised that plan, or in, in about a year, we revised that plan and that, that purpose for that building has changed. Now, let me just put this in perspective, that is a plan. And already we know that plans change. We can plan to do that, but we're not a funding body. We can't say we're 100% going to do this, it is in stone. There are numerous items that have been on that plan since before we had a five-year plan that aren't, that probably won't get funded, at least not anytime soon, not in five years probably. So we can say that, hey, yeah, this will be Battle Creek and this will be Spring Hill High School. But in reality, we do not have in stone anywhere where we are going to continue operating two high schools in the northern area of our county. Who knows? In 2024, when we open this new high school, there may be, there may be a need for another high school. If I had a crystal ball, I could tell you there was for certain and we wouldn't even be having this discussion. Unfortunately, I, I don't have a crystal ball and I cannot predict the future. I can say that historically, this is what's happened. We have changed, we have changed our minds twice already about the purpose of that building. Can it change a third time? Absolutely, absolutely. So with that being said, I, in order to, to 100% preserve the legacy of Spring Hill High School, I will be voting for the new school to be Spring Hill High School.
I'd like to comment as well. I, I did appreciate all the emails and read them all today and, and I think that they made a point because I have been someone who has vacillated on both sides of the issue. I do understand the tradition and the fact that everybody, no matter what, does end up, that is Spring Hill High School, that building, that grounds, that place, that memory. And I, I think the new high school, I will not be voting for this motion because I, I will be voting, I believe it ought to be Battle Creek High School. I, I don't think naming it Spring Hill at Battle Creek would work at all, I think that's ridiculous. I, I do think that we're going to see a need for our second high school down the road. It's going to be three years before we have this one built. And yes, we've changed many times on this, but when we, when we purchased that land, we purchased it with the idea that, that these would be a complex of schools. We named the first two Battle Creek, it just, it just makes it go full circle and it still leaves the tradition and that school there where it will and always will be as Spring Hill High School. And I see other lights on and I see your director, you have one on. I'll let you speak first and then Ms. Irvin.
Today I had a conversation with Dr. Potts, who is the principal at Spring Hill High School. And as you know, we started getting some emails from the actual teachers there. So what she did, she met with some of her staff members after the school today and she kind of was taking a temperature check of something she already knew the temperature about. And Dr. Potts contacted me back again and she said, what she is hearing from her staff, and I feel like I need to be the voice for them, is that they, looking at the five-year plan, they want the current Spring Hill High School to be, continued to be named Spring Hill High School. I'm just letting you know what they said because I promised I would be their voice tonight.
Ms. Irvin.
And I appreciate those comments, never do I mean to, you know, ignore those. It's just I really want the fear stated that there is no guarantee that that school will remain a high school at this point in time. Now, are the chances there that it could? It could. Another thought of mine is, it just crossed my mind tonight. Right now, Mr. Perriman, can you tell me how many students we have in Spring Hill High School today at this moment? I know growth is coming, but today at this moment, how many are there?
Exact number is going to be right at 1,200.
1,200. Okay, we have 1,200 kids right now there. And we are building, and I've, like I say, tried to, tried to talk about getting Battle Creek a little bit smaller to fully accommodate that. But hypothetically, if we have a Battle Creek school setting at 2,000, a Spring Hill High School setting at 1,200, we have seats for 3,200 kids. Granted, I mean, I do believe our future growth could, could potentially handle that, I don't know how quickly. So another thing that I see is again, where are we going to pull from if the growth doesn't come? I can tell you what's going to happen. I'm probably wrong, I hope I'm wrong, but Calioka is going to become no longer a unit school because Calioka is going to be going to Battle Creek. And then Santa Fe is no longer going to be a unit school because Santa Fe is going to be going to Spring Hill. And somehow or another, that's going to shape Hampshire because Hampshire is going to be going to Columbia Central because more of Columbia Central's kids are going to be going to Spring Hill High School or Battle Creek. So I'm thinking about all the needs of the county across, and I don't like it. I wish we, I wish we could nail in stone what the future is. I just really wish we didn't have to make this decision today. But in my personal due diligence of trying to keep the legacy of Spring Hill High School alive, I will be voting to approve this motion.
Is that, lights are all off, call for the question. Do you want to vote on that? If there's consensus? Okay, all right, then we're ready to vote. The motion, the motion is to name the new high school, Spring Hill High School. Motion made by Ms. Irvin and seconded by Mr. Moore.
Can't hear you.
The motion is to name the new school, Spring Hill High School. That's the motion we're going to vote on. Please vote now. And that motion is defeated. Mr. Lindsey.
Motion to name the new school Battle Creek High School.
Not the middle school, the high school?
Correct.
The new school?
The new school.
Okay. And seconded by Mr. Moore, any discussion? Okay, the motion is to name the new school, Battle Creek High School. We're ready to vote. Which is option two. Mr. Lindsey and Mr. Moore seconded. Please vote now. So that motion does pass. So we have a new high school. All right, moving on. The new high school and Santa Fe auxiliary gym estimated architect costs.
Yes, ma'am, if you remember, our architect is working off of the state contract pricing and we are at a point where they have, yesterday they delivered the DD plans on the Santa Fe gym to us. They went to pricing today on that. We are deep into the high school, this will not all be paid out immediately, but we're asking for this to be approved so that we can start payment as payments come in, as they complete work. I will say while, while we're discussing this, I had spoken with Chair Fulbright asking for a, a retreat date or a work session, whatever he wanted to call it, the second week of March because we would like to present to you guys in a, in a standalone session the plans that we've got so far, where we are with the planning, the pricing, the site, decisions that have been kind of drawn to, to this point. So this motion and this request is just to approve, this is based off of state pricing, this amount of money so we can process payment. I can defer the second question, Ms. Kinzer, to the work session if you would prefer us to do that and set a date in March or I would request after you vote on this, if you're willing to, to set a date in March, I would request we do that, that second week. But this is just to approve the, the funds that we, we know over the course of this project, we're going to pay out.
Motion to approve, but you gave me different options here, the motion to approve all?
Just the funds.
Just the funds, okay. All right, I'll come back to you, Mr. Lindsey, is that a second? All right, and Mr. Moore, did you?
On the date, could you just get us a date and let us just, just set a date that would work?
I, I can talk to Chair Fulbright and set a date for that week if that's okay with y'all. We were looking at the second week of March as the time to present. That's the week following our March board meeting. So if, if that's y'all's will, then I'll just work with him to set a date.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Then we're ready to vote. Please vote now. And that motion does pass. Okay, moving on, we don't have any purchases over 25,000, we're ready to, the COVID policy.
Yes, ma'am. This is a policy I was bringing back up. One, you don't have to take any action on this policy if you do not want to. I was bringing it back up as COVID had, had kind of resurgence. I was bringing it back up as COVID had, had kind of resurgenced recently, how our policy currently stands, an employee has to have a positive PCR test or a doctor's note, or they're, like a household member has COVID. So option A was allowing an employee to use a different kind of test now that at-home tests, rapid tests, that kind of, rather than just the PCR test or a doctor's note. Option B gives a little bit more, that it extends the type of test as well as if they're having to quarantine or isolate due to COVID. And then option C goes a little bit further, and these are all based off what was in 2020, back when this all started, under the FF-CRA, and option C gives, like if they're having to stay home because childcare is closed. So those are just options currently, you know, if they don't have that test, they can't use their COVID sick leave. And I know we had talked about before, people do have sick leave, but we also have a lot of new employees this year who, who don't have sick leave, and so this is a good option for, for them if, if they don't have the sick leave time that's built up, where we have, you know, some employees who have over 200 days and some employees who started last month that have, you know, one day.
You said that we can take no action and it would be?
Correct, the policy would just remain as it is and there would be nothing changed, or we can vote to?
Choose to take A, B, or C.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Irvin.
So in a county where teacher morale can kind of be low, I think maybe this is something we can do to give back to our staff and maybe help a lot for these difficult times. So I would like to see us choose an option, I really don't know that it has to be C, I think C's the most generous. I would be, you know, willing to hear what other board members, you know, think about that, but I would like to see us do something.
Ms. Parker.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve option A, and I can explain my reasons.
All right, there's a motion and a second to, to approve option A, and Ms. Parker will speak to that.
All right, my concern on option B is it says, subject to federal, state, or local quarantine, and having recently had to go through this, they don't agree. So I'm really hesitant to approve that language because I don't know which one we would really, we would, we would be following.
That's fair. What we have as a school system been following is the state's guidelines, so I guess the policy does, it says an or, so I could update it, I know, like, but that, we've been following Tennessee Department of Health guidelines.
Which is different than the CDC, which is federal.
Right. Because nobody can agree, so.
As somebody that's had to have kids home an extra week because we can't agree with the feds, you know, I just would, I think there's a little bit of disagreement there, that's why I'm hesitant on that language. The other, the other thing is, I would love to give the option, I understand the childcare aspect of it, but I also feel like as a school system, we have an obligation to try to make sure that we have our, our schools staffed, and I feel like this potentially makes it more difficult for us to do that, and we've already run into those issues. I mean, I would hope that we, we can try and work with employees as much as possible, but I feel like if we make it too broad, and I feel like option C makes it a little too broad, so that was my reason for picking option A. I do think the PCR, using the at-home tests, I think that's, that makes a lot more sense.
Mr. Lindsey.
I'm fine with option A, but I just want to point out, as I pointed out in the work session, that I don't want it to get lost that, when it comes to, to employee morale, that we're often, we still offer a benefit with COVID leave that not many people left in the world get. So it's, it is a benefit above and beyond, you know, lots of people now, they, in the last few weeks, there's been a lot of people contracting and they had to, they, they use their time, we still give that 10 days worth of COVID leave. So I just don't want to lose sight of, of that, that, you know, we, we still are doing our part to, to help our employees out.
Okay, any other discussion? The motion is for option A, we're ready to vote. And that motion does pass. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the superintendent's evaluation. Ms., did you, do you want to make a comment?
Can I request that we defer this to the next work session? We had asked for some documents from the chair, and I think with him being ill, we didn't, we didn't get those.
And actually, that was what I was going to say, that?
Sorry, thank you.
He said that he had not been able to kind of get that together, and so if we'll just postpone that to the work session, if that's all right with everyone. Okay, the Tennessee Corps contract is the one that was added, it's a budget amendment. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Hooper has made the motion, seconded by Mr. Howell. Any discussion? Then we're ready to vote.
Quickly, is this, this is approving the, the contract and also a budget amendment?
An MOU, the MOU.
So we're doing, we're taking care of both things with one motion.
Is that correct?
I would defer to Mr. World, we can do both?
Yes.
Is that, that's what your motion is, correct, Mr. Hooper? Okay, so Charlie, we need to specify the budget amendment. Yes. Okay, we're ready to vote. And that budget, and that passes, thank you. Any other, any other business that we need to take up at this point? Okay, Mr. Hickman.
One of the things that I was asked to do was work with Jake, and we came up with the letters to ask all the municipalities for the total tax increase. We have those letters, there are no action needed. Talked with Chair Fulbright, and he just wanted me to put this on FYI so you guys could see those. If you see something on there you don't like or want us to take off, please let us know. We will be, Shirley's working with these municipalities, trying to get us a place on their agendas so we can bring this letter to them.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Then I will, I will, a motion to adjourn, and I don't think there's anybody voting against that, so y'all have a good day.